All right, let's get this work session started. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Marcy.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Webber.
Here.
Most approved agenda is proposed, second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, we are now open. Craig.
All right, Craig Clark, building official. So, I thought the first thing would, we're looking at a little ordinance change for the footing drainage connection program, and I just wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed. We have some new council people. It's been a long time since we talked about this, so I thought it would be good, I got probably five, 10 minutes here, just kind of to refresh everybody, and then we'll actually talk about the changes that, to the ordinance. So, the original ordinance is ordinance 5248, and what that did is, the purpose of it was to eliminate the sanitary sewer from getting discharged from footing drains around people's properties. That was adopted in October 27, 2014, with an effective date of January 1, 2015. The first district we talked about was service area 15 and 16. It is a triangle, I think everybody probably knows where it is, that's up around university to, I'm trying to think of the area, but it's the service area 15 and 16, and the timeframe was two years to do this area. There's about 4,000 properties in this area that we started. The, to date, we have 2,729 of them completed, so that means either some of those works, some of those houses needed the work done, and they've had it done, and been reimbursed, some have had no work done because they were in compliance to begin with, but that is how many we've inspected to date. We have spent $3.5 million on this program, to date. There's a wide range of the cost, the city rebates the $2,000, and I didn't put that slide on here, but I think about, we're right around the 90% is done for the $2,000, it's between 91 and 92. Some of them get a little skewed by, some people had other things done in the basement, and that shows up on the permit value, so we kind of take those off to, because there's some that are 10,000 or 12,000, but they had a basement remodel done at the same time, so some of those are a little hard to determine, some of that, but it's about 90, 91% for the $2,000. So, as part of this program, we took on a way to try to justify what this program is doing, and how much water we're actually removing from the sanitary sewer. So, we started a program that installs these meters right here, they're a meter that has a digital readout that tells you how much water flows through that pipe. So, they are hooked on the discharge pipe, and then you can see a little white piece of pipe, we have to have that for the accurate reading, and then their hose is hooked on to the other end of that and discharges out in their yard. We currently have 20 of these installed on houses around this service area. This is a picture of the meters a little closer up, and then that's showing water discharging out. So, we actually have had these installed roughly about four months to date. It was, it's been kind of an up and down scale, as you can see there. If you look, the light blue is April, May is the reddish, pinkish color, June is the gray color, and then July is a little purplish, I guess, it's kind of hard to tell. So, if you can see, it fluctuates tremendously, it's probably going to take somebody to analyze this data at some point, we're pretty early still in this phase, but just so you're understanding, that peak, that peak right there, that is 66,006 gallons of water, one house pumped in a one-month timeframe. So, if you take that in, that would fill up half a Gates Pool in one month. Just kind of put that in perspective. They talk about GPMs and different things, but I think gallons per day really puts it in perspective, and that is a large one, and this sampling was done randomly, we didn't pick all of the worst houses or the best houses, we just kind of tried to pick out people that are willing to work with us, because we do have to every month go check these and have access to their yards and that kind of stuff, so, and that graph's just kind of up and down. So, the average gallons per day, so in April, out of the 20 meters, they pump 572 gallons a day, that's each meter on average pumps that much. In, did I say May? I meant April.
You said April.
Okay, April. May is 199 gallons, June was 344 gallons, and July was 472 gallons. So, if you multiply that times the over 2,000 we did, that's a lot of water in a day's period that is not going down the sanitary sewer anymore. So, that's kind of a recap on what's happened so far, very quick overview, I guess I want to make sure, does anybody have any questions on that before I kind of move on to the proposed changes to the ordinance?
Quick question, do we have some that have come in under 2,000, or do you know that?
Yeah, we have, I would say there's probably three to four contractors out there that are consistently at the 18, $1,900, that are doing quite a few. Then we have a couple contractors that are about 22, $2,300 mark, so it kind of depends who you get for a contractor, and a lot are at 2,000.
So, to add to that question, did you indicate at the beginning that 91, 92% were under that $2,000 threshold?
At or under that 2,000, so there was no money required by the homeowner in that situation, you know, there was probably still some inconvenience of people coming into their house and that kind of stuff, but there was actually no dollars they had to spend to get that work done.
So, Craig, help me understand this, so the water that's being pumped out of the system that's not going into the sanitary sewer system that has to be treated, is that what's happening?
Correct, yep, so we're eliminating that water by not treating it at the plant, it's being pumped in a yard or in the storm sewer.
Is that a huge savings for, from, as far as processing, or no?
I guess, I'm not, probably, that's probably not my expertise to talk about what the wastewater treatment plant, you know, can handle, and if it's a cost savings, I mean, obviously, it's a benefit, I would say, to them, I mean, I don't know if they can break it down and say, you know, it costs one cent per thousand, you know, I don't, I just don't know that, that's not, I think, I know, speaking with the Waste Management Director, I think they hope to have some upcoming work sessions on different types of the C-MOM program and the consent decree and all that kind of stuff, so I think maybe that would be a good question they could work on and try to answer for that.
Craig.
Go ahead.
Are you having any specific areas where there's more issues of complaint than others?
When you say complaint, I'm assuming you're talking about the discharge of the water?
That, that's part of it, as well as the contractors and the work that they're doing. I mean, I've received several complaints about that, matter of fact, one, two today, so.
I guess complaints, I would say, you know, out of 2,700 properties, you're going to have some complaints, you know, you know, they range from the guy backed his truck on my yard, and, or the concrete, they don't like how it's finished, to, I mean, it's multiple different complaints. Are some of them valid? Yeah, there have been some valid ones. Are some of them, you know, that's really not the city's responsibility, he backed on your grass, you know, you need to talk to him about it, and they try to get them resolved, but, so you're always going to have some of those complaints. I don't feel like there's been a lot, and, you know, I field most of those, so there's been some, and I think with any construction project, you always have some. Dealing with the discharge of the water, there has been less than I thought there would be, I guess I can tell you that. There is a few homes that pump a lot of water, and it is problematic for them from time to time. It does seem, you know, it goes up and down, you know, one of those, I'm going to use one as an example, I won't, but she was very adamant that, you know, she was pumping a lot of water, and she's one of these that has the meter actually, and she's not the highest pumper, but, and then she has an option, the hook to the storm sewer, and she got prices, and I think it was about $1,100 for her, the hook to that storm sewer, well, she's now weighed that $1,100 with, well, I moved the hose a little bit more, and it's just fine, and she is okay with moving her hose now. So, it's kind of one of those, people get used to it a little bit more after they, you know, are used to doing that process. Same thing, you know, you now have a sump pump that kicks on in your house, people, I've had that complaint, well, I hear it, I didn't hear it before, and I said, yep, you're going to hear it, and I said, a lot of people that have sump pumps, they hear them kick on, and it's a reminder to me that it's still working, so that's what I, I like hearing mine kick on, because I know it's still working, so, but, so those type of complaints have been very few, I would say.
Craig, one of the issues that you had discussed before was about the draining from the sump pump goes out into the yard, but then it affects the neighbors' yards as well, has, has that been an issue?
In specific areas, it is an issue, I mean, there's some houses, and that, that is an issue during what time of year? It, you know, in some cases, there's good alternative, in some cases, there's not, so it's very, very specific per property. I would say we have maybe five out of that 2,700 that have that issue, so it's just, and, you know, they might call me every three or four months. Thanks.
I have a question on the $2,000 reimbursement for those, do we see how much it actually costs, the homeowner?
Yep.
So, we only pay $1,800 if it's $1,800, we don't pay 2,000, because it's 2,000 that we reimburse?
We require an itemized invoice.
Okay.
That is required.
Okay, and that's happening, you think, on every project?
Yes.
He wouldn't pay it otherwise.
Yeah, she won't pay it.
So, Craig, the last year of this, there's what, 1,271 that aren't completed, is your plan to get those wrapped up in the upcoming year?
Well, actually, that's, we could go to this, I mean, that's the first question of the change, so I'll start it, so the proposed change that, we're talking about changing this ordinance is, this was considered to be a two-year program for this area, I am asking to make it a three-year program, so basically, nothing changes except they have an additional year to do that work. We roughly have about 1,271 left, I think, is about where that's at, and it's not as much, we have six months left of that, so we just currently sent out a letter stating that you have six months left to finish this, and I thought it would be good to send that out before we took this to council and made it public that you actually maybe have a year in six months, just to get people moving, and there was a ton of people that called and said, oh, I procrastinated, you know, and this kind of stuff, and they were very nice about it, and so, the big thing that I feel would be beneficial is, we don't want to penalize people that want to get the work done, and I think this gives us the opportunity to, you know, knock on those people's door at some point and say, you need to get this done, I mean, some people don't read the newspaper, junk mail, I get a lot of it, I might toss that city letter, you know, so I think it just gives us more opportunity for them not to lose out on the $2,000, otherwise, come January 1st, or December 31st of this year, they would no longer get that $2,000, so.
Craig, this is a plumbing, inspected plumbing work, isn't it? You inspect the work.
Correct.
Your inspectors.
Yep.
And you sign off, just like any plumbing.
Yes.
Contractor.
Yep.
And then the other question I have is, you can't discharge on the city property.
Correct.
In other words, between the sidewalk and the curb.
Yep. So, and, there's a couple different things, that's probably a good thing to bring up, so what the plumbing code says is you cannot cause a nuisance on your neighbor or city property. What has always been the general rule of thumb, that is considered 10 feet back, so if you're discharging 10 foot back, if your hose is more than 10 foot back, we're okay with that.
From the back of the sidewalk.
From the back of the sidewalk or wherever, now, it's, but you still, that's kind of a rule of thumb, if you're 10, let's say you're 11 foot back, and you're still flooding the street, you still have to make it farther back, or, you know, do some, but that's what we tell people to set that 10 foot at least away from their property line when they install these.
There's not supposed to be any water running into the street?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we kind of jumped to the first one, the second ordinance change, there's, is, we had some people that did this work prior to us adopting this ordinance, so they, we put them on a list, they've been on there for, a lot of them have been on there for a year and a half now, basically wanting to know if they can get reimbursed, so I talked with the mayor about it, and I met with Jerome and Tom about it, and so what is proposed at this time is to give those people 50% of what they would have paid to have that done. It had to be inspected, it had to have a permit, and all those things, we had a list of about, we had a list of 12, we have talked to, and I think we're down to about eight that have all that information and can provide it to us, so there may be a few more out there, but that's where we're at at this time. I guess, there's a couple different things about this, we're going back basically one year, how we established that date is, you know, we were trying to figure out a good date, the very first time we had a public, what I consider a public meeting, it was with our plumbing board, which is considered a public meeting, was about a month to a month and a half after this date, so we're kind of going back, you know, a little bit farther, but that would have been the first time anybody besides city staff would have known that we're even talking about this program at that time, and so, we met with the plumbing board and went over things like, how do you guys see this working, you know, what would be the best way for you, different things like that, so that's what we use for a date. The 50% reimbursement was simply brought up as, you know, we don't want to penalize these people, but we also don't want to set precedent for the rest of the city.
So, if 3,000 people decide they want to go out and put this down, and then we may not even, possibly even move to that area, then we wouldn't, was 3,000 times?
Yeah.
$22,000, so we'll do something, something to support, but we don't want to incentivize that people go out and do this without knowing if we'll have the monies to do it like this in the future, or which particular areas we're going to move to next.
That's probably, I mean, that's the biggest point, is we could move into the next area, and council decides we're only going to give people $1,000 instead of 2,000, I mean, that all has to come back through council and be decided by this body, so.
But Craig, don't you think it's fair that we pay them exactly what we paid everybody else who complied with our ordinance, since they're going to be in the same boat, and as, you know, it was a new program, so anything we do in the future, everybody's going to be well-versed in the footing drain issue.
I'm a little, I'm a little, I understand what you're saying, and I agree that these people, I would hate for them to have to pay, you know, because they did their six months before somebody else, and their neighbor might have got 2,000, and they're only going to get 1,000, let's say, but I also worry about, we're going to have, your next-door neighbor says, well, geez, I want to do mine now to get it done, and then I'll get my money later, and I, right now, have the money to pay for it, so I'll get my money later, and I always worry about, we have people start doing that, and they're doing it outside of our designated area, will cause problem in the future, I guess, so.
Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with Craig, and one of my biggest concerns is, is these 12 or 13 individuals, whatever it was, they took it upon themselves, knowing that this was going to be coming in, prior to actually going ahead and doing this work.
Well, they didn't know there would be money, we hadn't awarded a dollar amount.
And, yeah, I understand that aspect of it, but that dollar amount did come in after the fact, and it's there, so these 12 individuals, in my mind, the fair thing to do, because they did it within a certain timeframe, maybe go ahead and give them the full amount, but then individuals after that need to know and understand that that opportunity is not going to be there for them, but these 12 individuals prior to that, to me, it would be fair to actually go ahead and reimburse them at that rate, that's just my opinion.
You know, there's a lot of codes and stuff we'd have to go back for, that things weren't put in place prior to, and reward a lot of people back, but, you know, setting a precedence to give back money before a program actually started, and then reward them prior to this, what if we hadn't even gone to this particular service area and went to another one, but, you know, it's ultimately council's decision, but we have to draw the line at some particular point, but it's council decision, what you want to set it at, but it sets a, it sets a precedent, now, this absolutely sets a precedent, so going forth, if someone does the same thing, what do you say?
If they have prior knowledge prior to it, because there was no prior knowledge from a standpoint of individuals going and fixing it, I understand, you know, that, yeah, there were things put in place to where we would reimburse, but those individuals, you know, even the people that did it, did they know that they were going to be reimbursed at 2,000 after the fact?
Just like the clerk, all those folks probably want three years of, three years of return, too, I mean, you know, I was thinking that meeting them halfway is better than...
I agree there, yeah, there's no doubt about that, but.
Craig. Great, in the past, I talked to you about a couple amendments that I would like to see put in here that have never ever been, or have never seen the light of day, but you've been keeping some statistics, I believe, and one of them is, and I don't know if you're getting those requests anymore, but one of them was an amendment that would allow people to do this on the, on their own, with proper oversight and that, and proper inspections and stuff like that, because there...
Keep going back, because I'm tired.
Because, because there was at least one individual by name who had requested to have that, saving the city approximately $1,400, by him doing this himself and having it properly inspected, meeting the muster, and the second amendment was for those people that wanted to direct, wanted to connect directly to the, the stormwater sewer out in their street, and, you know, that type of an idea with, that not only $2,000 reimbursement, but then the additional thing of having it assessed like there, what's done with the water issues that come up, and I was wondering, do you have statistics on both of those? Have you been keeping them? And if you haven't, you haven't, but wouldn't this be a time to add those two amendments as something that the city council could at least look at?
So, I guess I'm, first, the people doing their own work, besides the original, we had a few people that wanted to do their own work and that kind of stuff, they have since had their work done by a contractor and that kind of thing, so I have not had that request pass, basically, the first part of that initial time period we talked about. You know, we had, had some people that wanted to do their own electrical, things like that, you know, we just told them, you can do it, but you're not going, you can't get rebated for that amount, they heard a contractor do the plumbing and that kind of stuff. So, I don't really have a good statistic on that one, because I really haven't had it since that first part. The disconnection, to connect to the storm sewer, we are, you know, trying to keep and track, you know, these large volume, people that pump a large volume of water, it would be nice for them to hook into the storm sewer, you know, it eliminates some problem for them, probably for us at some point, because they're going to be calling and complaining. Where we have storm sewer, those people have connected, the issue is where we don't have storm sewer, and so, you know, I, I said, and we have an edit meeting, and I said, when Mayor Clark was here, and still when Mayor Hart's here, I said, I'm going to bring it up at every edit meeting, but I think that's a whole separate program itself, just because of the volume of work that has to be done to put that behind curb tile in, and, you know, make those connections. That's why I don't think it should be in this ordinance, but that's up, that's my two cents worth, so you guys can decide.
Craig, we'll take one more question by Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry, I think I lost track of where the heck we were. So, the 12, roughly 12 individuals you're talking about, all 12 of those are in service area 15 and 16, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a few that are outside, that we have kept their information, that had the work done, and we said we would, you know, hold on to that and collect that data, but they know that they're not part of this and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so the idea of whether it's 50% or 100%, as I'm hearing some council members suggest, is that something we're going to determine between now and when that would come to council, or how are we going to, are we going to bring it forward the way it is, and then have that discussion then? I guess I'm just curious.
We're going to do an informal poll, who wants to take the lead without a vote, or...
You could say what your consensus is, or...
Because I think we may have three that would be in support of coming back at 100. Is there anyone want to look at that?
I would.
So, do we, if we want to, we can take another week, and then come back.
And I guess that's the question, if, you know, we can, typically, we put this on next week's agenda, but, you know, that's up to you guys.
And so, what are the other primary changes, or just the two years, the three years?
Yeah.
And that doesn't, that doesn't put us in any kind of jeopardy with the EPA or any of those folks, correct? As far as what we agreed to do?
I would, I may not be the best person to ask on that, but I would say, yes, that'd be correct.
You stood up, you have some comment?
No, I haven't.
I would, yeah, I think EPA, that, they're not going to care one way or another on that year.
The thing that I need council to think about as they're considering that, Mayor mentioned, with 3,000 households citywide, go ahead and do it, assuming they're going to get reimbursed or 2,000 later, that's $6 million, and we, you know, that, that's a huge commitment that we don't have, we have not decided to pay yet, and I want, also, one thing Craig didn't walk through is why we started this. We really started this plan because we wanted to reduce sanitary sewer overflows that the EPA was concerned about, and we had some engineering advice at the time, that a large percentage of those were in service areas 15 and 16, so what we tried to do was go to the area with the most problems and get the most impact for reducing those. I won't say there aren't benefits to doing that citywide, because it does... I won't say there aren't benefits to doing that citywide, because it does reduce flows at the sewer plant, but there may be places where it's not going to matter in terms of sanitary sewer overflows, it's not going to affect that particular issue, whether we do it in that particular neighborhood or not. So I'm not sure you want to commit to doing this citywide right now, and I don't, I really caution you at setting a precedent, if you start agreeing to reimburse people outside the bounds of the program, how much is that going to cost us, and how will you want to pay for it if we choose to do that for thousands of people citywide?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question of Michelle.
Very quick, because we're finance, we can have some more discussions.
How did we get to the point of where we were doing the reimbursement of the rebates? You know, if it's going to be an ongoing thing and stuff?
Let's, can we...
Okay, yeah, we can do this later, we can have a discussion.
That is fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Motion for adjournment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Let's call the finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welber?
Here.
Approval of the agenda and the minutes of July 25th as proposed.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second on the agenda and the minutes. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests, we have seven today.
Travel requests for Sam Barrett, sanitation operations supervisor, class solid waste composting online, whenever that program is going through, to be determined, with the amount of $175. Chief Treoka and Lieutenant McClellan, class meeting training consultation with Gary McFadden, Charlotte, North Carolina, cost not to exceed $1,176. Police Officer Saunders to class meeting international outlaw motorcycle gang investigator association conference in Kansas City, Missouri, August 21st, amount not to exceed $1,148. Refund request of garbage, fees of $484.46 to 511 Hope Avenue. Refund request for garbage fee collections on a vacant property at 715 Lorraine Street, in the amount of $216. Refund request for CLH management, where garbage collection fees paid while contracted with a private hauler, 803 and 811 Sonya Drive, in the amount of $93.80. Refund request for overpayment fees and yard waste, extended services, which were billed in error for the property located at 934 Lincoln Avenue, in the amount of $85.40.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second on the travel requests and the refunds. Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion passes. Pre-offs.
Mr. Pre-offs tonight, engineering, amount estimated for shipping and handling of $18,466.70. Repair of a sanitary sewer manhole at the end of Nevada Street. Fire amount estimated at $4,000. Consumables for classes held on site at the training center. The garage, to spend $22,902.67. Engine replacement, Parks Refuge Truck, number 410804. Human rights, to spend $8,000 for television advertising with KWWL. Human rights to spend $2,000 expenditure is billboard advertising with Lamar Advertising. With leisure services, $1,678 to install two light posts with mini acorn globes. Leisure services, $12,000. Rental portion of maintenance building space at 304 West Fifth Street to cover August 2016 through July 2017, which is in the fiscal year budget of 2017. MIS amount estimated at $1,214.21 for the annual maintenance contract for the Dell server. Police, $5,255.10, repair squad car number 409, which was in an accident. Police, $16,980. Renewal of the annual support agreement for shield wear, track software, and NCIC server for July 2016 to June 2017. Safety committee, committee to spend $1,000 for wellness and safety fair prizes and work apparel. Traffic operations to spend $1,932.50. Directional bore and conduit installation at West Park Avenue and Commercial Street. Lastly, the sewer department to spend $3,006.50 plus $200 shipping and handling to purchase seven pressure switches for digester boilers.
I'll second that. Motion, a second on the pre-offs. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion passes. And I'll make a motion to approve the budget line of amendments, what's on file at the city clerk's office, and also the bills payment. Bills payment this week are $1,0037,019.79. That's 1,037,001,9.79.
Second.
Motion, a second on the bills payment. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid. And I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
It's about time to get this council meeting started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welber?
Here.
All right, so we have a full council this evening. Now we will have a prayer by Pastor Jeffrey Blom from Trinity Lutheran Church. Either you can stand or you can sit, you can participate or choose not to participate. It is up to your discretion.
Mayor Hart, the first time I met you, you were, you came to my church to visit, and I was up front and you were back here. I'm glad to come and visit with you tonight.
All right, thanks for doing it.
Mayor Hart, members of the council, and all who are gathered here tonight, let us pray. Almighty God, we lift before you all who govern the city of Waterloo. May these elected officials who hold power and understand that it is a trust from you to be used, not for personal glory or profit, but for the service of the people. Drive them from cynicism, selfishness, and corruption. Grant through them in your mercy a just and honest government, and give the city the grace to live together in unity and peace through Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you. We will now have our pledge of allegiance given this evening by Director of Safety Services, Dan Treoka.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may now be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and we are deleting number 11, and also the minutes of July 25, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have an opposed? All right, so we have the minutes. First up on the slate is proclamation for National Night Out, which is tomorrow, so I'd like to call up Mr. Rudy Jones.
City of Waterloo proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, sponsors the National Community Building Campaign on August 2nd, 2016, entitled National Night Out. Whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in Waterloo to join 38 million people in over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And whereas Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make neighbor, to make our neighborhoods safer, better places to live in. And whereas neighbors assist law enforcement through joint community building efforts and supporting National Night Out 2016. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Waterloo come together with the law enforcement and work together to build a safer, better community. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, dear hereby, call upon the citizens of Waterloo to join neighborhood associations and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 33rd Annual National Night Out on August 2nd, 2016. So we have some great events planned tomorrow, so, Mr. Jones, could you tell us about those?
Yes. There is a number of neighborhood associations that will be having some fellowship, some dinners, some activities, where some of the city elected officials and employees will be in attendance, so we want to go and encourage them to keep up the great work that they've been doing over the years.
Right. And how many neighborhood associations do we have?
We have approximately 28 neighborhood associations, with one and two still in the works.
And even with that, we are working towards trying to get those groups, some of them that may not have been active, to get them jump-started and moving forward.
Yes, yes. We have some that are very active, but not formally recognized, but we'll get there.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, so please take advantage tomorrow.
Mr. Jones, can I call your office at 291-4429 to get a schedule of those events as well?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items 1 through 3, and within that is the bills payment. Bills payment this week is $1,037,019.79. That's 1,037,001,9.79.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with a second. Any questions at all, council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, those items carried. And I think we have in here a recommendation of appointment of Michelle Bozen and Amber Chase to the position of clerk one in the police department, starting tomorrow, so make sure we, now, I don't think they're in the audience.
No, sir.
All right.
But they're listening.
All right, someone want to take number two?
Mr. Ram.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof publication and host of public hearing, and that's a request by Lamar Advertising for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 45-foot tall, 378-square-foot off-premises billboard located at 2010 Sears Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
No comments on file. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions or have comments about this particular item on the agenda? Yes, sir. Name and address and concerns.
My name is Tom Webber. I'm with Lamar Advertising, and my address is 208 East Main Street in Dunkerton. And I guess I would just like to point out that the ordinance asked us to have 1,000 feet separation between billboards, and the biggest issue, it seems, through this whole process, has been the sign congestion, and we are keeping 1,000 feet separation distance between our billboards. Actually, more than 1,000 feet, so just wanted to point that out. If you have any questions, feel free to...
All right, all right, thank you.
Hello.
You want to, you want to do that now?
Oh, okay, I can wait.
Do you? Well, can we check out the audience first?
Sure.
All right, yes, sir. You have to speak to this item?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Lawrence Wheeler, 433 Pratt number, I have no opposition to this project. Matter of fact, I would like to see things accelerated on getting rid of the non-lit-up billboards. There's one particular billboard over on Broadway Street, and a lot of times it gets neglected with peeling wallpaper, and the thing of it is, is I would like to be able to see a fast track to make this community a green community, free of blight, which the electronic signs are easier to maintain, and don't use as much energy as the pasted paper with the reflective lights, which I, which is like the sign over there on Broadway, which is, is an eyesore. I'd like to see it gone and have it replaced with a digital sign.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that has some comments or questions about this particular item? Going a second time?
Mr. Ram, make a motion then to close the hearing and file oral comments and also the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, that was denial.
There was a denial.
Recommendation of denial.
I'm sorry. So duly noted, do you have a second?
I second it.
All right, so that motion has been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Mr. Ram, make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance approving a request by Lamar Advertising for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a 45-foot tall, 378-square-foot off-premises billboard located at 2010 Sears Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Right before we take questions, this, this measure was voted down on the Planning and Programming Zoning Commission, and this particular item must receive a two-thirds, four-fourths, six out of seven for it to be able to pass. So just want to let you know upfront. But I know we have questions. Who was, was that, you were first?
Yes, Mr. Ram. Sir? Yes, thank you, and the question I had was, your sign, what exactly is the purpose of that sign there?
We have another digital sign further down the road, and that is pretty much sold out all the time. We have a lot of call for advertising in the area, just because it is such a busy area, so we want to obviously maximize our, our advertising potential to sell advertising on that sign. We want to put a digital sign... We want to put a digital sign in the opposite direction of the one we have to get traffic from both directions.
And the Sears, or I mean, the Crossroads Shopping Businesses aren't automatically on that sign?
No, they're not automatically on it. We have been talking to the gentleman from Crossroads about working something out to get them on there at a reduced rate.
Okay, so they'd have to pay to...
Yes, they would.
And would some of that signage include businesses and places that aren't even in Waterloo?
It could, sure.
Okay, it's whatever they choose to pay.
It would probably be similar to the other digital sign where, just to guess, I would say 2/3 of what we put on there are local. There are, like the Mississauga Casino goes on the other digital. It would be similar to that. Obviously, we're not going to turn away someone that wants to pay us for advertising, so it would be both local and non-local.
Okay. That's all for that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question. Today I watched on video the planning and zoning meeting, I believe it was held in April, and you indicated that you guys have been in discussion with the Crossroads Management along with Lamar signs. There's no resolution yet in terms of what signage they want to include and where they're at and what kind of communications.
No, we have not met with them further. We just let them know that we would be open to discussion about talking about a reduced rate if they wanted to get one of the slots on there for, to rotate between Crossroads Businesses. No further discussion between us and them.
So since April, no discussion and trying to find a resolution to work together?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I do have issues with maybe that as a potential, and maybe that's from the Crossroads area as well, that that may, where they're not communicating properly, and I think in terms of working together as a business community that we should be trying to find solutions rather than potential arguments. And I do think there's an awful lot of signage already out there that we could be looking at that would be better suited to designate the occupancy of the Crossroads rather than the digital at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a dollar amount, the revenue that comes into the city for this sign?
Apparently not. I would hate to say a dollar amount that comes into the city. We are offering the landowner a significant amount to have our sign there, a rental amount per year.
Does the city not make money off your sign?
Well, we pay taxes for the real property, for the signs themselves. That particular sign, that would be what the city would make money on, is the taxes from real property.
Sir, is Lamar, where are they based out of?
Cedar Rapids right now. We used to have an office in Waterloo. We're called Lamar Advertising of Waterloo and Cedar Rapids.
But no office in Waterloo?
No office in Waterloo, no. We joined the two offices about 10 years ago.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if we could maybe have Noel give us a little overview on what the reasons for the recommendation of denial were.
Please. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Just one note in terms of the timeline, so it was heard at the April Planning Commission meeting, then it came to the council, since there was only six council members, and it took a six-person vote, they did send it back to the Planning Commission. So Tom Alasim, it was at the Planning Commission, was actually in June for the last meeting, that you may have seen on tape. This is a site plan amendment, so it's an S1 district, which is a shopping center district, so all changes in an approved site plan come back to the council through the Planning Commission after a recommendation, since they're adding something other than the building that was originally approved there. That's why it's before you today procedurally. On the Planning Commission, there was some opposition stated by, I believe, the manager of Poncharles and the Crossroads Manager had noted that he had some store owners that were opposed to the request, at the same time he did not rule out them working with Lamar and advertising on there. The Crossroads Center has been working to try and find a little bit more visibility on San Marnon as well as from I-380 and Highway 20, but if they go to an off-premise sign within 300 feet of the highway system, they have to get DOT approval, and the DOT has not approved any of their proposals so far that they've been looking at to the south side, so that's why he wasn't ruling out advertising on this on San Marnon to get a little more visibility for some of those storefronts. The zoning ordinance itself requires that any new billboards be located at least 1,000 feet from another billboard. This one is 1,000 feet from the nearest billboard. There's two other, if they read the staff report, there's two other signs that are kind of hybrids. They're not off-premise, at the same time, they advertise multiple businesses, maybe from a budding properties to them. One of them, you may recall, was approved down there at the former Bonanza Site to locate a bunch of those from the new Toys R Us building being redeveloped to allow for a little bit shared signage in that area. The other one was a super target, since it was such a massive site and it went from Penny's and also to Sears, they were given two different signs for target there for entrances. It's always been staff's opinion that the purpose of signage is to allow people to be able to find their destination and to allow businesses a little more visibility, so we try to work with businesses when they're looking at these different locations. Staff did recommend approval, since this met the 1,000-foot requirement, and we do believe that it would be helpful to have a little more signage up there for local businesses in the area.
Thank you. So Noel, you can have one electronic sign versus 10 paper signs, or whatever you call it, cardboard.
Because it's changing. I don't know how often it changes, but, correct. Six per minute.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment on this. I'll be voting no on this, like I did the first time around, and planning and zoning has defeated this two times, and on both occasions, there was opposition that was brought forward by John Harshberger from Crossroads Mall, and his opposition was based on visibility and lack of visibility and what was going to happen if this was constructed. But there are other issues, and I'm just going to list them while I'm voting no. Driver distractibility in an extremely busy, highly-traffic corridor, even the Tech Review Committee brought up its distractibility due to the electronic billboarding that it will be producing in that particular area. Number 2 is clutter. This would be, I believe, the third digital billboard in the area, and there is overcrowding, and that lends to stimuli overload for drivers and people going by. Businesses in the mall fronted by this object. John Harshberger has mentioned spoke against it at the April P&amp;Z and next at the June P&amp;Z, and it wasn't just him alone that was opposed to this. Fourth thing is this 1,000-foot limit. Well, within that 1,000 feet or 1,050 feet, there are approximately, this would be, I believe, the fourth sign that would give the appearance of a huge billboard in that area again. Number 5 is just what the Lamar's company, it's not a local group, and they're charged for advertising on that, and also they have other cities that will advertise on those signs, and to me, probably the second most important thing is, if not the first, is that the Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen body, a citizen board, that's there to review these, and they'd reviewed city staff recommendations, they questioned Mr. Harshberger as well as the Lamar people, and on both occasions, they voted that down, and I think that us, to me, saying, "Well, okay, you voted it down, but we're going to say it's okay," I think that's, I don't think in keeping with understanding of what a commission, what we have commissions and citizen review boards for in the City of Waterloo. So I would ask other council members to vote no as well.
Quick question. I think we, there was some conversation, I guess, with Mr. Harshberger and the Crossroads Mall, and questions about how they can work more closely together. If they were working more closely together, or there was that opportunity, I mean, would that be something that would be supportive? Or, so just trying to think, because whether or not we like it, one day all boards would be electronic, so you better get your retinas ready.
Mr. Mayor, to me, that's not the issue. The issue is the overcrowding of advertising out there, the distractibility, and if you drive down that corridor there, it's not the easiest corridor, first of all, to drive, especially if you're heading out towards the south and even coming back, and if you've got signs there that are distracting you or they're changing all the time, and you've got a bunch of signs out there, to me, traffic safety is key to this. Visibility for the businesses at Crossroads are going to suffer from this, and that's, to me, that's telling, and that's why I'm voting no.
Well, that's fine, but I asked a question to the first councilman who expressed some concerns with regards to the business there, so that was your issue. I'm trying to take a look at all the issues, not just yours, and see if there could be some type of medium to move forward, but if there's no, if it's not, then...
Yes, you are, I also agree that if we could get the Crossroads Businesses and Management to be in cooperation with Lamar, that would be something that we could talk about. Without that, I think it's kind of a stretch.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
And I would agree, if we can bring the two sides together and have that conversation, and then while that's going on, the police and fire chiefs, some type of a report in terms of accidents, because I think the traffic issues is a problem as well, but I would like to know some kind of information, how many wrecks we have out there. But I think if the two groups can get together, the two groups being Lamar and Crossroads, and come up with some kind of an agreement on how they would work with it, I would lean more that way.
And then Councilman Schmidt, and then Councilman Lynn.
It just seems to me that, you know, Lamar is proposing, what they're proposing is within our guidelines, and so if our guidelines aren't correct, then we should change our guidelines, but a lot of what I'm hearing about why we should vote against this is a matter of opinion rather than fact. And so I would suggest either we approve this tonight and then not suspend the rules, with the idea in mind that gives us two more weeks to have Lamar and Crossroads come together for some kind of a meeting, or table it, as we are prone to do, but to have the two of them get together, because it does seem like it passes all the muster, so.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make the same point. If we pass it tonight, we still have two more readings, and that gives Lamar and Crossroads Management time to maybe work something out.
Well, I think with this one in the interest that it requires a supermajority, I think if you did do something, and I'm not an advocate for tabling, you probably may not want to take that vote tonight if you want to see some conversation happen, where they can work together, so maybe a table, I'm just thinking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So we don't need a supermajority to table?
Not to table.
Then I make a motion to table.
Second. The motion has been made with a second. Any discussion?
For how long, Mayor?
No. Maybe, I would probably say, we probably want to get this done before the end of the season, if I'm not mistaken, so it's two weeks, two weeks sufficient time, and then let them try to work it out. If they can't work it out, bring it back, and we'll move forward from there. So can we do two weeks?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, I make a motion to table for two weeks.
Second. All right, the motion's been made with a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item's been tabled for two weeks, and we'd be expecting some type of report back to staff to let us know where you're at. All right, number 3.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on a request by Action Garage to vacate the easterly 3-foot of 8-foot utility easement, of a 8-foot utility easement for the purposes of constructing a new detached garage located at 2734 Crestline Avenue.
Second. Motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions or speak on behalf of this particular item? No comments on file?
There's no comments on file.
Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive, close the hearing and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Action Garage to vacate the easterly 3-foot of a 8-foot utility easement for the purposes of constructing a new detached garage located at 2734 Crestline Avenue and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second. Motion has been made with a second. Council, any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do utilities sign off when we vacate utility easements? Do we notify utilities and they're okay with it?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. As a part of any Planning Commission agenda item, there's a technical review committee. All the utilities are a part of that, so they all have reviewed this. Mid-America had specific conditions as a part of this that are part of our recommendation. There was four conditions, because they had the overhead electric that was back in the utility, and they were fine with that as long as those conditions were in place.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, item carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance?
Second. Motion's been made with a second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, item carried. Number 4.
Yes, sir. Item number 4 is a motion received and filed proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the authorization of the sale and conveyance of certain tracts of land, formerly portions of West San Marnon Drive right-of-way, adjacent to 1104-1111, West San Marnon Drive, to San Marnon Management Limited, in the amount of $1 in accordance with the development agreement approved on April 27, 2015.
I'll second.
Motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there anything on file with this? Any comments?
No comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda?
I would simply like to know the value of that land that you're selling for a dollar.
No. Let me see, can you state your name and address for that?
Terry Stevens, Waterloo.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Following the 306.23 process for former state land, by transfer of jurisdiction, the City of Waterloo did have the land appraised. It appraised for approximately $172,000, together in the two tracts. That was offered out to all eligible bidders by following 306.23, and there were no bids received on that following that process, so therefore, the city is eligible to sell it, as per the conditions of the development agreement, for $1 for the investment of over $18 million for VGM's project.
All right. Any other questions? Going a second time?
Go ahead.
Going a second time?
So, in this case, we did follow 306.23 before we went to the step of authorizing this resolution.
And you don't think it's prudent to wait for the Supreme Court to make the Sunnyside South decision?
I do not. Mr. Zellifer can comment further if he'd like. I believe he sent out an email noting that the pending lawsuit against us has absolutely nothing to do with this sale.
And we're sure about that.
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. The reason we're in the Supreme Court now is a contempt action that the District Court found in favor of the city of Waterloo. Has nothing to do with what we're here doing now with the San Martin Company. The piece of land involved here did go through 306.23. They put the bids out, they got it appraised, they did everything they were supposed to do that they did not do the very first time they tried to sell the Sunnyside South property. That's what got them into trouble. After the Supreme Court ruled in that issue, the city realized that they have to follow 306.23 and that's exactly what they're doing now. There were no protests, there was nobody suing us, there's no, no nasty names, anything like that. They did what they were supposed to do and we're there.
Any other questions, Mr. Lynn?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, excuse me, Mr. Zellifer. Do we know when the Supreme Court is supposed to rule on the previous issue?
We're still getting a buzz. No, they'll do it in their own sweet time. I assume it'll be sometime during the fall session coming up.
Okay, but from a legal standpoint, that has absolutely nothing to do with this.
No, it doesn't. The reason we're in, let's see, we tried to sell the property a second time and that was the time that the, that the District Court ruled that our appraisal was too old. We had to go back and get another one. And Sunnyside South opponents thought that that would be contempt, that we were somehow willfully and maliciously trying to sell the property incorrectly and the District Court found in our favor. They are now appealing that for, I won't comment on the validity of it, you never know what's going to happen, but that's the thing, whether or not the city should be held in contempt for trying to follow 306.23.
So, the challenge, so this is not the same parcel of land?
Oh, no, this is not the same parcel of land. This is different. The two things are mutually exclusive. There's no relationship between them whatsoever.
Any more comments, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
I think we've already read it. As for a roll call vote at this point, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Welber?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item passes. So, let's, let's take the first, first three on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number five is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AMED Design of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for surveying, traffic, transportation, engineering design and related services for the Fifth and Sixth Street traffic signal improvements and authorizing mayor to execute said documents. Number six is a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for an amount not to exceed $49,500 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2017 gate well repair project and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Thank you. Let's just take five and six.
Sure.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Any questions about these two items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On number six, can we do that in-house? Why can't we do that in-house?
Eric.
Eric, First City Engineer. It's kind of specialty work and we don't really either have staff availability at this time.
Is the estimate still three and a half million dollars to fix these things?
These are the stormwater gate wells that we've already been working on for some time. The estimate that you're talking about is for the sanitary gate wells.
Oh, this is stormwater.
That we're still planning for the future.
These are the gates that didn't close during the '08 flood or something?
Well, there's some of them had issues, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In regards to number five, if I could ask Sandy Greco a couple of questions, please?
Sandy.
Yeah, Sandy, I know that there are peoples, some I think out in the audience and myself included, that are concerned about the Fifth and Sixth Street traffic signalization and them remaining one-way rather than trying to turn them into two-way streets with, in the concepts of walkable, bikeable streets as well. And I'm just wondering with, with this, with the approval of this $40,000, what that is actually going to do? What they're going to, what's the design all about? Is it geared towards keeping those as one-way or can there also be that option of looking at converting these streets back to two-way streets or making them two-way streets with traffic improvements and traffic safety in mind as well?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent Traffic. First of all, the city received a DOT grant for over $480,000 to make improvements on Fifth and Sixth Street. This, when we bring in a consulting engineer to help our traffic engineer out, we're doing a lot of the work in-house too for the study. But this will, the improvements that will be made will be new controllers, some new additional signals, pavement markings, and anything that's done will be done for the one-way. If a two-way is requested, we would have to bring in consulting engineers to do a total study on putting it back to two-way. If it would be two-way, it would be from the Six Corners to Franklin Street. So, that's a great amount. Plus, Sixth Street was done with federal funds. So, we might have to go back in the records and see when that was done, because we can't reverse those and then we might have to pay that money back.
Look, Ms. Greco, isn't there a possibility that even though that grant was written specifying it for one-way streets, that that grant, if there was a desire to change it to two-way streets, that that grant money still could be used? The $484,000?
That would be a question we would have to ask the Iowa DOT to see if they would.
Do you know if that...
Right now, it's for one-way.
Has that ever been asked since groups of people have come up desiring those streets to become two-way streets?
We have not gone back to them and asked that, because that wouldn't include a whole new design and also a whole new study.
So, this...
We're kind of locked in right now, because that's what we're seeking for.
So, the $40,000 is for surveying for the design concepts of one-way streets for Fifth and Sixth?
Yes.
Okay, is there any way Sandy Greco and Mr. Mayor, that the question could be asked of the DOT if that $484,000 could be used? If there was a design concept for two-way streets that was gaining momentum and...
Well, as far as asking, we can possibly ask, but the question is, does a majority of the city council believe that citizens can come? And we always encourage it, but, you know, is there four council members that are ready to take that step or is that something that we need to take a look at, our planning that we have coming up with regards to downtown streets and where we'd like to see us move in and what type of direction? So, I mean, and right now, if we do the design services, does that include new signals and all those things within that money?
Yes, it would include additional signals and all of them, markings and new traffic signal controllers.
So, if we decide two years down the road, we want to have a two-way street, do we have to give those signals back?
No.
So, we can keep them in reuse? But I guess it's, I mean, the grant is written and it was approved by council. I mean, all of your direction, what do you...
If you would deny this or deny us to do it, we would have to send the money back and then we have to...
I'm just asking, Mr. Mayor and Sandy, if a question could be asked of DOT, if the, if that grant could be changed and the money award geared towards two-way streets, if there was a will to have them become two-way streets? That's all I'm asking for at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And so, I've been involved with Main Street for a number of years and I know it's been a topic of conversation of converting the downtown streets back to two-way. I believe that's going on in Dubuque, I believe it's going on in Cedar Rapids. So, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, because I'm not an urban planner, but it seems like that's where a lot of the other communities are going. And so, my, my sense is, Councilman Morsy's questioning the logic of spending a half million dollars for something and then two years later saying, well, let's reverse what we just did. Would that be a fair assessment, Mr. Morsy?
Well, the $484,000, I'm, I'm pretty sure is locked into, you know, the concept that where they applied for the grant. And I would, as you say, I'd hate to see that money go towards something that could be changed with that amount of money being used towards a concept that is more friendly to downtown businesses and more friendly to a walkable, bikeable community, which I think that's sort of what the urban planners here are doing with making all of the different amenities and putting, putting out the different apartment and condominium and residential areas for downtown Waterloo. That's, I just think it would be a good thing to just step back and take a look at.
Which, you know, and logistically, this would, our, our streets have a particular shape, a particular speed limit, particular right-of-way, and a lot of various things that we would need to take a look at where that cost could probably be, exceed the amount of money that we received for the grant. Is it that you would like, is it that you would like us to ask the question?
Yes, it is.
And asking the question, we would be able to proceed if you would support proceeding.
Well, I will support proceeding, yes. I just would like that question asked.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
And which would be, excuse me, which would be, when we talk about long-range money, this will be a great opportunity, maybe an initiative that we can push forth through our planning. Yes, sir.
I, I think this council has to be a little careful in how they're dealing with asking for money. We had two grants given to us in regards to the Hammond Ridgeway intersection that we turned down twice, and now we're looking to turn down another one. I mean, they're going to start saying, you guys have to know what you're asking for before you start asking for this money. I'd be a little bit careful what you're doing.
Well, Councilman Welber, I might. I'm not asking that any money be turned down here. I'm just asking the question is, can that money, if there's a will to change the concept of Fifth and Sixth Street, can that money be used towards that concept rather than just stuck in the one-way concept? That's all I'm asking.
And I understand that, but I think we have to be upfront with that initially before we start specifically putting it on Fifth and Sixth Street on these intersections.
Understood.
Any other conversation? We will reach out to the, the DOT and ask the question to see if, if we can take a look at that. We will let you know, let you know what that states. Would we want to, if it, if this money cannot be used, it would be a shame to send that, all that money back when we can at least make some, some improvements in the meantime. But Sandy, can we reach out at least to ask the question as Councilman's suggestion? Both Councilmen?
Yes, we can. We'll do it this week.
Is it okay if we proceed or...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Greco.
All right, thank you. Thank you for at least some type of compromise in that discussion. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Lawrence Wheeler, Fourth or Third, Bradnever. I see it detrimental to be changing something that works, changing a one-way to a two-way. We've got senior citizens are used to maybe driving those particular corridors and then to go change on them. It's going to cause quite a bit of confusion. Plus also too, I see a lot of discrimination for the handicapped regarding traffic signals, because the thing of it is, is that I had an emergency out of town, was in Topeka, Kansas. And the thing of it is, is the way you guys have your traffic signals set up, you are discriminating against the blind and the deaf. Because the thing of it is, is that you have no audible crossings at none of your signals. In Topeka, some of the signals chirp or cuckoo, depending on the direction that they want to go. Also too, another thing that Topeka has done in Kansas is they've went ahead and put on the corners for the blind, rail signs showing which direction the, if you were like, say for example, at Franklin and Third Street, if you wanted to continue down Franklin, you just feel on the post the rail for showing the direction that Franklin does go and the direction of Third Street goes. And the thing of it is, is that when it comes to 88, you're falling behind. And there's also too, you got traffic signals that run on dead time. And there's nobody that's maybe handicapped or disabled, like during the winter or getting rained on, that wants to sit waiting for a signal to change. It's running on dead time when they can use what is called a signal interrupter, which is the buttons that are on some of the traffic signal. Broadway and Conger's the only, only street that I know of that has the interrupters for the disabled. But there's no audible guidance for the blind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Deeds. Name and address.
Thank you. David Deeds, 922 Mulberry Street. I come here regarding item number five. In fact, we did raise the question of whether this money could be of your purpose when the council accepted the grant back in March, April. It's kind of disappointing that the question was not asked in the meantime. Counsel, I would agree with a couple of the comments from the council that it seems somewhat disappointing that we might spend half a million dollars, that we might then just in a couple of years decide to get with the program and follow what others in the state are doing very actively in converting two-ways to one-ways, or, I'm sorry, two, one-ways to two-ways. It's interesting, if you read the original application, I think it's... In Topeka, some of the signals chirp or cuckoo depending on the direction that they want to go. Also too, another thing that Topeka has done in Kansas is they've went ahead and put on the corners for the blind, rail signs showing which direction the, if you were like, say for example, Franklin and Third Street, if you wanted to continue down Franklin, you just feel on the post the rail for showing the direction that Franklin does go and the direction of Third Street goes. And the thing of it is, is that when it comes to 88, you're falling behind. And there's also too, you've got traffic signals that run on dead time. And there's nobody that's maybe handicapped or disabled, like during the winter or getting rained on, that wants to sit waiting for a signal to change, it's running on dead time, when they can use what is called a signal interrupter, which is the buttons that are on some of the traffic signals. Broadway and Conger is the only street that I know of that has the interrupters for the disabled. But there's no audible guidance for the blind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Deeds. Name and address.
Thank you. David Deeds, 922 Mulberry Street. I come here regarding item number five. In fact, we did raise the question of whether this money could be of your purpose when the council accepted the grant back in March, April. It's kind of disappointing that the question was not asked in the meantime. I would agree with a couple of the comments from the council that it seems somewhat disappointing that we might spend half a million dollars, that we might then just in a couple of years decide to get with the program and follow what others in the state are doing very actively in converting two-ways to one-ways, or, I'm sorry, one-ways to two-ways. It's interesting, if you read the original application, I think it's quite telling that I think over half of the accidents cited in the application is the reason for the safety need were left turns from the wrong lane. Now, think about that for a second. Why would someone turn left from the wrong lane? It's because they're expecting a two-way street. That's what they've been trained to want, that's what they've been trained to drive on, and therefore that we continue to try to force this one-way structure seems a bit odd. So the other thing, one other point I'll make real quickly here is, is I think this brings up a bigger issue, is that particularly for the downtown district, I think it's very important that, and I think we all know this, and sometimes we forget, and so I don't think it's anything sinister, it's just that we forget, that there is a very active downtown community group, residents, business owners, property owners, who do care about what happens in downtown. And then when these types of grants are applied for, it's very helpful to have input from the public rather than just slamming the grant application into the state. And I think that gets to Councilman Walper's point. Let's talk about some of these things before we actually just throw these grants in there.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, just to be clear, item number five is approving a PSA with AMET. So, I mean, how does that impact or not impact this grant application? I mean, aren't those two different things?
By having an engineer? Or not having an engineer?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, it seems to me, and maybe Sandy just needs to clarify it for me, but it seems to me that we're talking about here with the DOT, I guess I don't see how that is directly connected to item five. I see how it ultimately connects, but I don't see that approving this motion or voting against this motion, I just, I'm not sure what effect that has on the grant application.
So Sandy, the design services for the traffic safety improvements, which the grant is for, is being designed by AMET or would be. Is that right or not?
Yes, for what we, yes, it'll help us design it.
So what we propose to the DOT, they're going to create it?
The grant was approved for the amount, and when we applied for the grant, it was because of all the crashes and there was been a fatality on Sixth Street. That's how we get our safety money, is the accidents and improvements that are going to be made. AMET will come in and help us design how many additional signals we need, exactly what type of markings we need.
To make it?
We're doing from Washington to Franklin.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I did that?
Well, so going back to Councilman Morrissey and my concern about this, if the DOT were to come back and say, okay, if you want to step back and take a look at this a little more long-term, AMET theoretically could be the design company that would design it if we went back to two-way streets, possibly.
It could be, yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lynn?
The grant pays for AMET's design work?
No, we pay for AMET's design work.
So the grants for the hardware and paint, like signals and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sandy? Any other conversation? Madam Clerk, roll call vote on five and six.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Morrissey, we will follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, someone take number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving supplemental agreement number two to the professional services agreement with recreation, engineering, and planning of Boulder, Colorado, in the amount of $32,430 paid for with WDC gaming funds for preliminary engineering and design in conjunction with the construction of a whitewater course on the Cedar River in downtown Waterloo.
Check out.
That motion has been made with the second. We have Mr. Bob Manning that would like to address the council on this particular item.
Bob Manning, excuse me, a bit of a cold mayor, so you have to excuse my water bottle. Bob Manning, I'm the president of the Cedar Trails Partnership. We're excited about the whitewater opportunities that Waterloo and Cedar Falls have. The last couple of years, my wife and I have been going to the Canoe Acopia, a very unusual name, very popular in the state of Wisconsin. And I've talked with a couple of you gentlemen today, and so I brought along a copy because most, the folks that I talk with have never heard of this before, but I'd like to, if I can, just have this, copies of the Canoe Acopia handed out to the council. The Canoe Acopia in Madison, Wisconsin, is in a facility on a weekend in March that's about one and a half times the size of the Unidome. And that facility, it's amazing, the first year I went, I was kind of in shock and awe. And the second year I went, I was excited to go back because we talk about the metro area and the bike trails and the trail system that we have in Waterloo, Cedar Falls. And in this facility, again, if you can imagine something, one and a half times the size of the dome, is full of kayaks and canoes and paddles and life jackets. And did you know that you can buy a different sized paddle for whether you want to go fast or slow in your kayak? And you can buy kayak shoes? Did you know you can buy kayak socks? I had never heard of that. And they have everything for sale there. And people are buying this unreal and walking out with the canoes and the paddles and the life jackets. It is, it's a whole different world up there. And we're just scratching the surface of what the potential can be for our rivers in Waterloo and Cedar Falls, Iowa. To go up there and to just see, this little mini brochure even, page, just tells you that, hey, there's some things going on that we haven't looked at in our community. And it's exciting for us as the Cedar Trails Partnership and our 300-plus members to see these additional recreational opportunities come to Blackhawk County and Waterloo and Cedar Falls. We think that Waterloo, Cedar Falls can be the midpoint between Charles City and Manchester, where they have whitewater courses, and to have them here, it puts us in the ringleader in the state of Iowa for water trails. I mean, when we go to Madison, we take our maps, our trails maps, and the things that people enjoy about that. So we talk about our bike trails, how they're looped throughout the Waterloo, Cedar Falls area. And people love starting and stopping at one location. And you know what we say to them? Now, if you want to do some water trails, you can likewise start in the Cedar River, just south of the Cedar Falls Dam, come down in your canoe or kayak, and through four portages, end up back at the Cedar Falls, just south of the Cedar Falls Dam. You'll cut through the river onto Bricker Lake, onto George With Lake, onto Alice With, and then eventually back to the Cedar River. Now, some of us don't like the portage, and we understand that, but some of these people said, well, how long is the longest one? Said, about 100 yards, a football field. Said, well, that's not that big of a deal. We like to do that stuff. More importantly, we like to do two activities on a weekend, to come here to Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and ride our bicycles on your looped trails, and then to have other opportunities, whether it be kayaking, or river rafting, or whitewater rafting, or whatever the options will be with this, is a tremendous opportunity for us to step up. And we know there's a lot of favor in the council, and we're actually hoping that you'll all think about this hard tonight because we're not committing any tax dollars, we're spending money that's through the Gaming Commission, is being presented to conduct this study. And that's kind of like what we tell our children, let's look at the possibilities out there. And right now, the authorization is just to authorize the option to consider going forward with the whitewater stuff. It's not committing any dollars, but it's something like when 45 years ago, excuse me, 44 years ago, a couple of fellows in Des Moines had an idea of bike riding across the state of Iowa. And it started with 145 riders. And last, and this past Saturday, 2,000, excuse me, 20,000 of my closest friends were out there riding on RagBri. I mean, it exploded. People spend a lot of money on recreation, whether it be our boating, our hunting, our bicycles, whatever, we spend a lot of money on that, and people will come here. It's either my wife calling or a motion to sit down.
It's a little bit of both. All right, thank you, thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make some comments about this particular item?
Can we buy more time?
No, we are.
All right. Have some real good closing thoughts.
All right.
Hi, Dale Carroll, 130 Tribal Road in Waterloo. I didn't plan on speaking about this or anything else tonight, but I've had people ask me some questions like this whitewater, downtown Waterloo. Where's everybody going to park? Are you going to park at the parking ramp and then carry all of your gear over to the river? I mean, it seems like there's no infrastructure for this. You're going to have to park all the cars. If you do get a lot of, if you want a lot of people there, you're going to have to have a lot of parking. You have to have restaurants, places to buy provisions along the river. And, you know, you can go in at Charles City and come to Waterloo, but then you go to Cedar Rapids. And I know I've been between Waterloo and Gillerville, and I had to carry my canoe along the way, so. As far as a long, a real long trip, you wouldn't be taking a long, it's still pretty long for a canoe, but you, like I said, you just don't have the infrastructure, I don't believe. If they wanted to start one, like I said, here's some suggestions, I don't know if I haven't looked at it enough, but where you could build a parking lot in that area, there's an awful lot of buildings still here, so. I, I don't know, I think it's been voted down twice, I don't know if it should be voted down again, but I think people need to think about what it's going to end up costing.
The project was voted to seek grant funding.
Okay.
Not this particular one. This is just being paid by the WDC for engineering and design, engineering and design work. So that's all that this is for right now.
Okay, that's, I don't see anything wrong with that. It's just that when they design it, I hope they, you know, look at the traffic and everything.
Utilization of ramps and restaurants and all those things.
Yes, all that.
Okay. Yes, sir. We got a gentleman coming up already, standing up, and we'll get to you next, Mr. Wheeler.
John Sherman, 1750 Robin Road. Seems like money, we don't have any problem spending 40, $50,000 for state, or for grants and miscellaneous other things, when all we have to do is talk to our neighbors. What kind of attendance are we doing in Manchester and Charles City now? Does anybody know how many customers they have every day? Weekends, of course, are going to be a little busier, but I've heard stories about Charles City that you can get on there anytime you want, it's not too crowded or anything. You know, 40, $50,000, it's not a big thing. It's not our money. But in turn, couldn't we use that for something else? That maybe be more applicable for our youth or some whatever? We've talked about this, talked about this, it should be very obvious. How many boats are going up and down the river now? You know, it was, it's one of them situations that just sort of astounds me that we can spend four or five million dollars total. We got to get the total package in here for just a very few people. And, you know, there's, Waterloo needs a lot of things besides just all toy things. Sometimes we need something for education and some other things. So let's think about that. Why can't we go to Manchester or Charles City and ask these folks, the businessmen and stuff, not the people? One of the mistakes we make, we always go to the top when we want to know what's going on. They're going to tell you whatever you want to hear. Go to the bottom and find out what the workers think. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm actually looking at an article that just came out, July 30th, as Dubuque, Des Moines, other communities are taking a look at this as well. But it just, you know, not just, it says Manchester site has drawn tens of thousands to a span of the Macolca River, but please come up, sir.
Good evening, Vern Fish, 3488 Keatswood Place. To answer the gentleman's question, we actually did take the former mayor of Waterloo over to Manchester, and we did talk to some of the local businesses. And the thing that, I've had the opportunity to paddle both the whitewater course at Charles City and at Manchester. And the thing that got me was every restaurant you went into was filled with wet, drippy people. Parking lots were filled. One of the small businesses in Manchester pointed out that now they actually have a flow of traffic, people coming in, and now it's also a safe place because the dam has been removed. It really does have an impact on downtown business areas. The concern about parking is legitimate, but having been to both of those water courses and having talked to the local businesses, it does have a dramatic impact. The thing about Charles City that really impressed me, I was just standing there, there were licensed places from three different states, and I lost track of how many different counties. There's a lot of people using those facilities. And then just from a natural resources standpoint, creating an opportunity for fish to migrate upstream is a good thing because we have a pool, water trap between the two dams, it restricts the populations that's there. So there's lots of good reasons, both economic, quality of life, and for natural resources, to explore this possibility. The cost is something you have to consider, but I think what's on the table today is just to explore it and get some design so you can make an informed decision. I support that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wheeler?
Lawrence Wheeler, 433 Bratner, I think this is a really good opportunity. Last week, this council and the mayor and the general consensus of this government body said, we want more jobs, more development, more income coming into this city. As far as the parking problem, for downtown, it would be a problem, but the thing of it is you've got a lot of vacant ground right across from Riverfront Stadium where the Bucks play, and they got a game going tonight. Also too, to utilize parking, you've got a lot of porous ground, as long as you don't pour concrete or asphalt. San Souci Island, it's available for parking. It's all vacated, it's stripped of asphalt, concrete, it's just green space. Put in some porous gravel for people to park on because, you know, like I said, the code enforcement people say, hey, you're not supposed to park on grass. And to be, for the city to be compliant with its own code enforcement division, put a bunch of gravel on San Souci Island, it's been all vacated because FEMA paid to buy and demolish all that, all those houses that were there. That would be another utilization of that particular property, and it's right in the middle of the river. And if it gets too crowded on one side of the river to whitewater raft or kayak or whatever, if you've got too much congestion on one side, just go to the other side, there's plenty of water.
All right, thank you.
David Deeds, 922 Mulberry. I would urge you to support this, moving this project forward. I think this is a good project for downtown. As I stand here, I moved back to the area 11 years ago, and the downtown that we see today is very different than the downtown that I saw when I came back here. And it was because people like yourselves made the choice to invest in the downtown, to move things forward, to think big, to dream big. And I hope that you continue to think big and dream big and pursue this particular project as well as others like it.
Thank you.
Jessica Young, 318 West Third Street, Apartment 1. My husband and I own a business downtown, a couple of blocks from the river, and it's a bicycle shop. And a project like this, I think, would help, we rent bikes out and it would help our business. If we could even possibly expand into renting kayaks out. I think any kind of thing that draws a diverse group of people, you know, having different kinds of activities in our cities helps bring different kinds of people and, you know, there, I mean, there's lots of studies that show that these kinds of things help with the businesses in the cities, which- kinds of things help with the businesses in the cities, which I think, um, long-term, if you have businesses that are thriving, then other businesses, people who are thinking about starting businesses see that, and then they want to have a storefront downtown, and then that could possibly increase the, you know, tax, tax, um, base that is, this is coming in, whatever. Sorry, I'm really bad at talking in front of people.
Oh, you're fine. Me too.
Anyway, I just think that this Whitewater course would be really great and it, I think that now would be a good time instead of doing like we sometimes do with projects and getting on the boat too late or, you know, after it's already kind of, um, the state's already filled up with other people. Oh, and also I've seen several commercials on KWWL for, I think it's Manchester, showing their businesses and showing their, that course and just, you know, saying, "Come to our town," and then they take, they have a different business each time. I think, you know, something might be working for them. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sean Page, 210 Normandy Street. Um, I work along the river, but, um, one of the things that, um, aside from working at Waterloo Center for Arts and seeing the potential site for the Whitewater, it's, you know, if none of you have been kayaking, if none of you have been on any of the trails from Blackhawk Creek along the Cedar River, along with the George With, if you haven't, there are some gems, there's some amazing spaces, as well as there's a whole lot of citizens that I have seen along those trails myself while I've been kayaking and actually experiencing it. So even though the rapids would be right in downtown, it's a part of a long line of trails throughout the Cedar Valley that I think are amazing. And it's a natural resource that we have, that is something that we, as an amenity, can just make the tourism in our area great, it makes our city and, say, our appeal and attraction to all the places, not only throughout Iowa, but throughout the Midwest, to be a destination. And so in conjunction with Cedar Falls, in conjunction with Manchester and Charles City, it ends up being a whole lot, like a major destination, a major location for this particular activity. And I do strongly encourage you, if you haven't been kayaking, to be kayaking and try it, but then ultimately to support this development and this project. It's just gonna make downtown even greater. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, we only allow one time, so, yes, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street, Waterloo taxpayer. Um, I hear all this about, well, it's gambling, the gaming conceals, WDC money, but in actuality, wasn't that originally established to help relieve the property taxpayer? Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna spend thirty-some thousand dollars to fund this study from them, which should actually have gone possibly to relieving the taxpayer, the property taxpayer. Uh, we talk about the restaurants and all that are gonna benefit from this. When they benefit from this, what do they get, what, what does that do for the property owner? It does nothing for them. It puts money into the sales tax, but that money is already committed to take care of the roads and, and bridges and everything else in town. Um, I suggest we, we, we put these funds that we possibly would spend on a Whitewater towards public safety, meaning cameras and maybe dredging the river, because at my age, I'm not gonna try to get into kayak, physically, first off. Secondly, I don't have the physical strength anymore to, to handle those paddles and all that stuff. And yet I would like to boat, and I've heard rumors that Waterloo, or Blackhawk County, has one of the biggest boat registrations in the state, but yet those people have to go to George With or Chain Lakes, whatever, and you find that all full of people. If you just wanna go fish, you've got to contend with boat wakes, et cetera. Um, you know, so wouldn't it be better to spend some money to dredge the river for more of the older population? We always seem to worry about the younger population. We need to, to get amenities here to get all these people here, but they're coming for a day or two. Sales tax money, not property relief, property tax relief, and that's what a lot of us are looking for, and we're also looking for something we can do, like fishing or casual boating. And we don't seem to worry about that. We always seem to think about, well, we need to get these young people to town. Yes, we do. But get good jobs here and lower the tax rate and improve our schools. Thank you.
Hello, Kami Scully, 605 Riverside Drive, Waterloo. Um, I wasn't going to talk, but I have to defend the river and what has happened with the dam. Um, it has made it more navigable. Um, we see so many more boats and so much more utilization of that river, and this would be one more amenity to bring more people to the river. And, um, it's going to build the community, a better place to live, a better place to work, a better place to visit. So, please support this. Thank you.
Good evening, Bruce Dubuque, Caser, Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I don't use kayaks myself normally. Do hang glide though, but, but I do give the youth, younger generation what they wanna do for fun, entertainment, recreation, or they go out killing people or shooting stuff. So we need to have, just gonna be some crime coming in with this project, but that should be negligible for the benefits of the whole general public. Thank you for my time. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this particular item? Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was wondering if Eric Thorson could give us just a summary of this, what this all is about.
Well, I don't know if it's Eric or if it's Paul. If I flip a coin.
Hi, Eric Thorstein, engineer. Uh, actually this is an amendment to the original agreement, and this involves doing the design work near the Sixth Street Dam, which will lengthen the course and also make it safer at that dam and in that area for potential kayakers, tubers, whoever's gonna use this, and there's lots of different things. Um, I'm probably not a kayaker, but I might do one of the others, so, um, it's, uh, something I think a lot of people can use, and this actually extends the course and continues on with the design and then also the permitting that's required.
I don't have a lot to add, Paul, Energy Services Director. Just a little background, this is number two. The number one change was a decision made to take a look at alternatives. Um, and with a broad stroke, they looked at alternatives and now we're focusing in. Back just a little bit, the original plan called for the removal of the small dam at Sixth Street, and there were a number of people who were concerned about that because it's used now for fishing. Um, this option will give us a chance to make some vast improvements in the fishing opportunities in the river as well as lengthening, and it will, with this change, it would be the longest, uh, existing kayak course, I should say, in the state.
I just wanna say thank you, Paul and Eric, and that's great news to me anyway. So thanks.
All right, yes, sir.
Paul, maybe you can help me out here. Is this agree, who's this agreement between the city and? The Boulder Company or, or WDC and the Boulder Company?
The agreement is between the city and the design firm, the engineering firm, and that would be consistent with our original, um, design agreement. This is just a supplement to that agreement. So, it's a continuation of the same, uh, way of doing business as we started. So, the city's not funding this, WDC is funding it, but since this facility, uh, would be on city property, it's actually a city improvement, so the city needs to enter into these contracts.
So originally, we were told that it was a WDC project, like the Sports Flex, so it's not like that at all.
It's similar in that WDC has taken the initiative on it and has funded the initial part of it. It's dissimilar in that, um, WDC won't actually be building it or owning it. WDC actually owns the Sports Flex as we speak today, that'll be transferred eventually to the city. So it's a little bit different, but it is similar.
And, and we're doing a project that's gonna cost three to five million dollars, but it, we just passed the CIP, we all voted yes. Five-year plan, it's not in the CIP for five years. Why would we mislead people by doing a study when we're not gonna even think about doing this thing for five years anyway?
The only comment I can have on that is it is in the CIP plan, but it's not, you're correct, there's no funding in there for it. We were initially told that the city would not have money to put toward this project, so I don't know, Mayor, if you wanna comment on that at all, but, uh, it was a previous mayor, that, that decision was made that, that the city at least initially would not put any money into it.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna make that same statement. I, I don't know, that's why we're taking a look at this, taking a look at possible funding sources, hence why we were trying to take a look at the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant a couple of months ago so that we could allocate as less to this as possible. So, um, this is one of, one of their priorities, uh, WDC. Um, it's a, I don't kayak myself personally, but there are people that do. Um, this right here is just a, a study, if I'm not mistaken, to see, take a look at Sixth Street and all those things, and then we'll go from there afterwards. If it is supported by the council this evening, this is just a study right now.
Mr. Mayor, um, we have, this council has, um, funded and I've supported millions of dollars worth of downtown projects in the last couple of years. Tens of millions of dollars. I think it's time we kinda slow down. There's a lot of other pressing needs. Those gate wells, that three and a half million dollars I was talking about earlier, uh, two-hundred million dollars for the EPA consent decree. We have a lot of needs. This is a want. Um, I think we should just take a deep breath here and look at the things we have to get done first before we do something else downtown.
All right, I value your opinion, thank you. Anyone else with any, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that, it's, it's great to, sorry?
No.
It's great to plan and, and Whitewater Course would be great. Uh, I would also ask that we would plan now on funding, uh, as you had mentioned, and to, obviously we're gonna have to fund this through private enterprise and more grants, a combination thereof, and that's what I would ask that we do to, to fund that. I wouldn't wanna lead us down this road of all this planning and then all of a sudden the city have to foot the bill for this. As Councilman Linda said, we have plenty of needs that we have to take care of soon. Um, but on the flip side, if we can pull together some private enterprise and grants, that kinda thing to cover the cost of this, then I think it's something, uh, worth looking into.
All right, thank you.
And I, I would agree, but could, uh, that we need to continue to plan and grow and, at the same time, be watchful of our tax dollars. I did talk to, uh, some of the folks that are actually planning this in terms of constructing it, and Mr. Dreyer's point, uh, senior citizens and the ability to fish and there's, it's handicap accept, accessible, that, uh, I'm told that there will be availability for a person in a wheelchair can actually get down and start fishing on those, uh, on the new portion of this. So, I think there's a lot of positives that we certainly look at, uh, this study, let it go forward, and then while in the meantime, be creative, look for ideas for funding it with the watchful eye on the tax dollars, because I do agree with Mr. Lynn and others that we have some needs in the community that, uh, potentially will take some dollars. But it's, there's opportunities for all kinds of ideas, of funding mechanisms that we could be reaching out to. And so I would be in supportive, so I support this.
All right, counsel, community, good discussion. Any other? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote just on number seven.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, due to the fact that, uh, I own the building most affected by the potential development here, I will abstain on this motion.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item's carried. Could someone take eight, nine, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt Resolution Number Eight, approving construction plans for sanitary sewer relocation serving 2086 Howard Avenue, which is Bauer Belt Tire, as submitted by JDE Engineering PLC of Waterloo, Iowa. And I move to adopt Resolution Number Nine, approving an agreement with revised software system design and implement a new website for the city of Waterloo for the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we just have a overview on item number nine? Sounds like we went down this road not too many years ago, so I'm just wondering, the betting and what all went into this, if we could.
Sure, a question on the director of IT. Um, I obviously wasn't here when we, I don't know how long this website, current one's been there, five years at least, I think.
Other than that?
We, uh, so beginning of this year, one of the projects that we put into the budget was to look at the redesign of this, because our site compared to other cities is, is lacking to be, to be nice. Um, so, uh, a few months ago, we came to council with the, um, request to, uh, go out to, um, put a proposal together, have vendors bring us proposals, um, early June, we wound up with that. Uh, we received seventeen proposals from, um, those three local vendors, and there's many throughout the Midwest, all over the country, actually. Uh, so we, uh, as part of the technology steering committee team, uh, we kind of brought a smaller subcommittee together to, uh, narrow that seventeen down to a manageable amount, which we thought three was a good amount to bring in, have them do proposal, um, or do a presentation in-house. So in mid, I guess about two, three weeks ago, um, they came in and did those proposals, um, did the presentations, um, some were webbed, some were onsite. At that time, uh, we had the entire steering committee in, um, to review that. Uh, there was twelve of us in there, uh, spent the entire morning going through those. The overwhelming consensus was revised software gave us the best bang for our buck. Um, all of the vendors came in under budget, um, so that was important, but we also felt that we wanted to look at, uh, you know, who had the best features, um, designed the best site, um, so we looked at many of the other sites that they'd done, um, and again, revised was the overwhelming choice of the committee.
Did you have metrics to make that decision?
Um, we had a couple of different scoring systems. We did have a scoring system that we had, um, put some parameters around, um, with that initial cut down to three. And then we also asked that, when we brought the entire committee together, that they, you know, look at the parameters that we had in the proposal, um, looking at those, um, and then, because everybody may score things just a little bit different, we asked them to rank their, um, kind of their favorite, and revised was, was the winner.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chris, I wanna compliment you on the detail of the supporting documents for this resolution. That was fabulous.
All right, thank you.
I, I would agree with that, that, uh, I actually learned a little bit about this background because of that documentation, but one piece that- But one piece that I didn't really pick up on was the strength of the security, the cyber issues that are out there now. Is there protections on that from getting inside the city?
There is.
With the website?
One of the requirements that we wanted was to make sure that whoever we did decide will do the hosting for that. We look at the security that they provide.
Okay.
And most of them are top-notch enterprise methods.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chris. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Now, has there been any disagreement or anyone come in about this? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Now, has there been any disagreement or anyone come in about this? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. That item carries. We have oral presentations at this time, your opportunity to address the council about non-agenda-related items. And we have a list right now. And we have Mr. Jerry Greer up first. Please state your name and your address.
Jerry Greer, 23 Lafayette Street. I have asked for five minutes because I wanna share a story that I hope is relevant to your duties. Forty years ago, I started to work at an organization that is in a parallel universe to this one. I did not know at the time, nor did I have a term for it, but I was working for a place managed by Thrivability thinkers. To understand a complex organization, it takes looking at all the various pieces and their proper orientation to get the complete picture. I wanna look at just two pieces of a fairly complex puzzle. First, the staff lounge. This is a hub where all staff would drift in and out during the day to get a cup of coffee that was already ready and to stop and chat with anyone and everyone who might have been there. The coffee was supplied, and leprechauns often left donuts and bagels. Sure, there was office gossip, domestic whining, and the solving of the world's problems, but more importantly, there was shop talk. Much shop talk, and this was encouraged and supported as everyone from the department head to the custodian sat and talked. The problems and solutions had no taboos, and everybody had equal say. There was no agenda, no minutes, just drifting in and out and talking. It was a den of dreaming, and every building and tailgate had one. More positive directions were generated there than in any staff meeting or in service. However, after a few years, the environment slowly drifted towards austerity thinkers. The coffee pot was too expensive, so it was pulled. Time talking was considered inefficient, and soon the staff lounge was a lunchroom. Dreaming turned to bitching. A stream of policies were needed for everything so that the managers could build their resumes. Staff didn't know as much as the managers, and consultants were the go-to thinkers. The ultimate condescension was the suggestion box. It did not last long because we peasants filled it with nonsense tainted with the anger of our lost voices. When I left four years ago, the lunchroom had become an echo chamber of silence. Secondly, staff travel. When I started, the Thrivability thinkers not only expected all staff to be active in upgrading their skills, professional meetings and conventions were assumed. It was expected that each outing would be as a team with more than an individual going. The professed reason was to get different perspectives. But everyone knew it was the value of the shop talk while commuting and after hours that was the real reason. In time, the austerity thinkers took over, and it was management that felt only they needed a presence at their professional events. For the rest of us, it became a paperwork nightmare to explain why it was important, what programs specifically did we plan on attending, what did we expect to achieve from it, and how that would benefit the organization. Only one person would go, and they could then train the rest of us when they got back. By the time I left, it was wiser not to go than to try to go. The point is, no one knows their job better than the people doing it. No one is more committed to their job than the people doing it. No one knows better how to make their jobs better than the people doing it. No one knows what they need to do their job better than the person doing it. Austerity thinkers look at numbers, and they see simple math answers. It is easy to count beans, or, as someone once said, "Everyone can count the seeds in an apple." Thrivability thinkers see everything and everyone as a gestalt, where encouragement, instead of domination, we yield something greater than the input values. They don't see beans but stocks and future harvests. Or to conclude that other guy, no one can count the apples in a seed. You have to decide if you wanna encourage professional growth requests or challenge them. You have to decide if you want a lunchroom or a den of dreamers. Thank you.
All right. We have a second person this evening. Ms. Terri Stevens, would you please please come up?
Terri Stevens. Excuse me. U.S. fatal pit bull attacks have surpassed 285 since the CDC stopped studying fatal dog attacks by breed in 1998. In the last eight-year period of the CDC study, pit bulls averaged nearly three deaths per year. From 2008 to 2015, the most recent eight-year period, pit bulls averaged 22 deaths per year, a 633% increase. In the 11-year period from 2005 to 2015, pit bulls killed 232 Americans, about one citizen every 17 days. On July 27th, an at-large pit bull from 1637 Ackerman Street was on our property again. This time, as I exited my car, it exhibited very aggressive behavior by charging at me, showing its teeth and growling. I screamed for my husband when he opened the door and yelled, "The dog ran away." I immediately called animal control and was told that they would send someone out. We left for an appointment, so I have no idea whether the officer came out or not. Later that night, while watching television, we heard our daughter screaming. We ran to the door just in time to scare the dog off. We were blessed to be home because she had fallen, injured her knee, and was trying to get up. I think most of us know what happens when aggressive dogs see someone on the ground. Had we not been there, she could have been badly bitten, maimed, or mauled to death. I have pictures. We called animal control again, and we were told an officer would come out in the morning. I stayed home all day waiting, but never saw one. This at-large dog is routinely outside the owner's fence, unrestrained by leash, cord, rope, chain, or other physical restraining device. The fence does not meet the ordinance specifications regarding height or width and has a hole in it from which the dog can escape. This at-large dog roams freely, has invaded our property on numerous occasions, and takes the liberty to both urinate and defecate on it, making it its territory. This is not the first time we've had problems with this dog owner and his dogs. More times than not, we have had to ask him to keep his dogs on leashes and on his property for our safety and the safety of our grandchildren. After refusing to do so, we started calling animal control. They've been called out several times by us and others. The owner has been rude and aggressive toward not only us, but also code enforcement officers. Maria, I believe her last name is Tiller, and Sandy Greco can attest to this fact. He has even demanded that a police officer get off his property with no repercussions. I find that strange and unacceptable, considering the fact that young teens are arrested and given police records for interference with official acts, simply for asking questions. I share this information because I want you to understand the type of individual we've been dealing with for the past several years. From 2005 to 215, dogs killed 360 Americans. Pit bulls contributed to over 74% of those deaths. Pit bulls are more likely to bite people than any other breed of dog. According to the National Pit Bull Victim Awareness webpage, there has been an 830% increase in pit bull attacks in the last seven years. They are considered to be one of the biggest public safety issues of today. April 18th, a man was attacked by three pit bulls while walking. July 5th, two children were bitten by a pit bull. On July 6th, two teens were attacked by pit bulls, and these happened in Waterloo. Eighty-eight cities in Iowa have dangerous dog breed ordinances. Pit bulls and other aggressive, dangerous dogs should not be allowed in the city of Waterloo. Across this country, data shows that states that have adopted breed-specific laws have enviable decreases in attacks, deaths, and euthanasia of offending animals. We pay taxes, part of what goes to public safety. Animal control is a part of public safety. I don't get unlimited opportunities to harass someone I might wanna harass by simply paying a fine or fines, and neither should dog owners. Animal control ordinances and code enforcers must protect the citizens in this city. Disregard for our health and well-being could easily result in trauma, maiming, or death. Although it is certainly not equal to loss of life, the fact is our quality of life is severely compromised because we cannot enjoy the lives that we have worked hard to build. It is ridiculous that four-footed animals and owners who have no consideration for the law have more protection than others. This pit bull has multiple infractions, including 5.1A, 6.9, and 11B, 5.1B, 3, and 4. I am asking that the mayor, council, and legal representative reevaluate the current animal control ordinance and create one that is truly more conducive to the protection of human beings and family pets. And I'd like to know, what lengths can our family go to to protect ourselves from this dog?
What lengths can you go to to protect your...
Ourselves from this dog. If this dog is on our property, what rights do we have to protect ourselves?
Sandy or Dan?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic. That's a question I'm really keen to answer because, I mean, you have the right to protect yourself. But we have been out there a number of times. We have left door hangers. He will not answer the door. We have a couple other ideas that we're going to do this week. But we were out there twice that Friday that you called.
Chief Trowka, do you know what we can do? Because of whatever I have to do to protect me and mine, I'm gonna do. I'll just state that right now, and I think anybody up here would do the same thing. We live in our home. We've been there 41 years. We've never had these kind of problems before this man moved next door. I try to be a good neighbor, but I'm certainly not trying to be mauled or have my grandchildren mauled or killed because laws are not protecting us and dogs are being protected. I have a problem with that. I have an immense problem with that. And I think that you should look at some of the cities that are doing good things in taking care of these pit bulls and other vicious dogs. And we look at the ordinance for Waterloo, Iowa.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Non-agenda-related items, sir?
Lawrence Wheeler, 433 Bratner. I agree with her comments regarding pit bulls. There's an irresponsible property owner at 133 Sayal Alphons that let their pit bull run large. Also, too, there's another person at 444 Bratner, just right down the street from me, that has problems confining their pit bulls. I guess the only resolution that she might try to do next is to go ahead and better fence her property to keep the animal off her premises. Also, too, my main item that I wanted to go ahead and discuss tonight is the city of Waterloo needs to get modern. Because what's happening is that our blind and our deaf are being discriminated against. Their access to public transportation is not being met. It's only being met for the people who have canes, walkers, and wheelchairs. Because the thing of it is, when I had to leave Waterloo back in April for an emergency to deal with a fire at a storage facility because somebody set up a meth lab, because medical reasons, I couldn't drive, so I utilized the buses there. And the thing of it is, they have guidance systems for the blind and the deaf because there's a caption above the no food, drink, or musical, you know, electronics. And they would have this caption that would show where the bus was at, where the next stop is, what the date, the temperature outdoors. And the thing of it is, is that not...and what the audible part of it, speaking where the bus is located, helps the blind, and the captioning helps the deaf. And the thing of it is, this city needs to crack down on met transit to stop discriminating against the blind and the deaf. Also, too, this council needs to have an interpreter to be in the background in a little tight corner to sign language for our deaf. And you're non-compliant. Des Moines, they have people to sign for the deaf. Other communities outside Waterloo, outside of Iowa, you guys are writing Flintstones.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Is that a doorbell? All right. Any other comments before we adjourn?
Motion received and filed. No comments and adjourned.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. We adjourn.